Well, good evening, District Six and others. We're want to welcome you to our District Six Town Hall. This is the first Town Hall meeting that we've had since the pandemic. So of course, we're holding the Town Hall through our Zoom, which you've already figured out if you're listening to me. I'm here in my home with Takako Suzuki, our field rep from District Six. And you can see our other panelists tonight are at least from my left to right. I don't know what you're seeing on your screen, but I've got Police Chief John Perez, City Manager Steve Mermel, and our Public Health Director Dr. Yingying Go is with us as well. Thank you all for being here. I thought, as we normally do, I would just kick it off. And of course, these are quite unusual times for us, you know, generally and certainly on the city council. We've been meeting virtually now for over four months since the declaration of emergency and the other orders came down from Sacramento and the governor. And I think that was on March 14th. So we've tried to carry on the business of the city council and obviously the city as best we could. And I think it's gone well, all things considered. I don't think any of us was prepared for such a devastating pandemic that has affected so many people's health and our economy and really all of the things that we do in our lives so drastically. We at the council, you know, in addition to sort of with obviously the help of our great staff, some of whom are before you tonight, we've tried to continue to provide the best possible service that we can as a as a city municipal services organization. We adopted our budget for the fiscal year ending next June, 2021. We are in an election cycle, so certainly the city clerk has been occupied with all things related to the election and probably some big question marks about about what that will look like depending on the arc of the pandemic. But I think more specifically, you know, we've been trying to address through our public health department, the sort of public health impacts of the pandemic. And then at the council, working with the staff, we've been working hard trying to mitigate as much as we can of the economic devastation and damage. And I think in both cases, we've got a lot to be proud of. You know, in terms of our public health, it's it's great that we have a public health department. We're one of only three cities in the state that does. There's a fourth city that sort of claims to have a public health department, but it's really more of a of an environmental office. But in terms of what I think we all think of as public health, led by a physician who is an expert in public health, it's really us and Berkeley and Long Beach are the only three cities. The other populations in our state rely on the county public health directors. And as I understand under state law, and I've had to learn a lot more about this than I knew before, but each county is required to have a county public health department and director. And of course, then there's a state public health department and director. And those persons have been extremely important, as has the municipal health department here in Pasadena with Dr. Go and her team. We, early on, at the city manager and Dr. Go's recommendation, working closely with Huntington Hospital, our only hospital in Pasadena anymore, we established a temporary hospital facility at the convention center. So as we saw those cases really rising and the hospitalizations and tragically fatalities as well, we were prepared for even more cases than Huntington would be able to handle if necessary. We also provided some temporary trailer residential units down around the Rose Bowl to be able to offer to public employees who, for example, had to quarantine or public health workers who might again have to quarantine or have to use temporary housing. So I've been overall pretty proud of our of our efforts in terms of the pandemic. I'll invite, when it's their turn, you know, comments from the public health director and the city manager and of course, the chief about that as well. In terms of the economics, you know, the the economics are equally devastating, frankly, obviously not to families that have suffered a fatality or a severe illness and hospitalization. But certainly for many, many families and individuals, you know, this has really dealt the economy a knockout blow. And so we've tried again very hard at city council to try to provide scaffolding to those elements of our economy that really, really need it. And I think we're talking here about things like the meals program that we rolled out very early on where we funded hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to provide meals to those who needed it because of a loss of of income occasion by the pandemic. We've rolled out a grant program for small businesses, which would be intended to be grant funds that they could use to stay in business and continue to provide paychecks to their employees and the like. We've tried to help the restaurateurs in Pasadena, a very important part of our local economy, with some modifications to when and how we allow outdoor dining to take place and outdoor seating. You may have noticed around town, some parklets and bollards going up on certain lanes of traffic and the like and more sidewalk dining than you would normally be used to seeing. And that's all driven by the fact that when we're in closure, as we are now, the indoor dining is not an option for our consumers, our residents, or the restaurants. So we want to allow them to do in addition to to-go dining, also to be able to to serve people outdoors. And I think, you know, the jury is still out on that, but I think it's it's going as well as could be expected so far. And we've done some other things. We imposed an eviction moratorium to prevent any evictions from happening during this time. We're offering actually direct rental assistance now to persons who may need a helping hand, again, because of the the economic damages that have been imposed by the by the pandemic. So again, you know, I we may not have done everything perfectly, but I think we've done a really great job in terms of these initiatives. And I know that certainly myself and all of my colleagues, you know, really care deeply about kind of these twin threats, you know, the public health threat and then the the threat to our economy and our quality of life, you know, with schools being closed and and all the rest, you know, 2020 sadly is going down as as sort of the year that never was in in many respects. So that's what we've been working on, as you would imagine. And maybe that would be a good segue to start our our panel discussion. And I thought maybe Dr. Go, you could go first and and give us an update from your perspective on how we're faring.
Thank you, Councilmember Madison. Good evening, everybody. I see the lighting a little bit funny. I can I share my screen? I have to have just a couple of slides.
Certainly. Are you able to grab the share screen there? Perfect.
It's working? Okay, great. So certainly, we are all in this together. I'm happy to share some updates on COVID-19, but I also just wanted to mention first off just how hard your public health department is working. I have an incredible staff who I can only describe as truly intrepid and selfless in the work that they've been doing to protect us all to the greatest extent possible from really this serious threat. And although we prepare and have prepared for at least a decade every year for emergencies such as this, it is true that we we could not have have known that this was the year that it would be such a we would be faced with such a great challenge all across the globe. And so we are happy to be here to serve. And truly, our public health nurses, our epidemiologists, our staff, our environmental health inspectors, everyone has been pulling together, working overtime, really giving everything they can to to our community. And I'm so proud of them. Let me see how to forward this. There we go. So this is a real and sobering map. I'm sorry, the the, you know, the data is correct on there. So the United States is at three and a half million cases and about 137,000 deaths. And you can see in this hot heat map where the cases are concentrated. And in the beginning, it really was concentrated on the east and west coasts. Then, as you can see, this red has been throughout the country and in the south as well, particularly hard hit some of the hotspots. And this is the dashboard that's provided by the State of California Public Health Department. That is a state where at a total of 300, almost 350,000 cases, over 7,000 deaths, unfortunately. And that LA County at 140,000 or so usually makes up about almost half of the cases and almost half of the deaths in the state. The they provide demographics on their dashboard. It's about half female, half male. And we do know that we're seeing 60% here of all the cases in the state among younger demographic, 18 to 49-year-olds. And of all the races, the Latino population, 55 make up 55% of the cases. And we've been seeing really steep increases in the rate of cases among that racial group in particular. Both African-Americans and Latinos are disproportionately affected as far as infections or cases of COVID-19 across the country, across the state and in Pasadena as well. This is a snapshot from our dashboard, and I invite you to look at our dashboard. We are making a few changes. I think we added some more information today that might be of interest to folks. And so we provide the laboratory confirmed cases. We provide the confirmed deaths that are associated with COVID. And the curve here, you can see of cumulative cases, looks pretty steady as far as growth. But you can see that there was a slight flattening here in between May and June and then started really to take off again. And that's what we've seen over the past four weeks, starting Memorial Day weekend, really, an increase in the rate of our daily new cases. And also, we are this week seeing the effects of Fourth of July weekend and seeing another bump in our cases, daily new cases because of presumably based on our case investigations, activities between households during the Fourth of July. We also provide gender and race breakdown, and it reflects the same patterns that I mentioned in the California data, although we have slightly more females than male cases. And I think that might reflect our older age demographic and the fact that women tend to have longer life expectancy than men. And then this graph, a lot of lines here, the red one. So the good thing to look at is the red one, which is Pasadena. And we can see that the increase in what we call the seven-day average of the number of new cases each day downs, depending on lab reporting or different number of people getting tests on a certain day. So to smooth that out, we do a seven-day average. And we look at this steady increase, starting in the middle of June over the past four weeks, in the number of new cases adjusted for population. However, you can also see that some of our surrounding counties and jurisdictions have had a steeper increase, and ours has been a little bit slower, which is is positive news. So there are a lot of common questions that we get, and the answers keep changing because the this is a novel virus. And the ways we test and treat this virus are constantly evolving and changing. And so I wanted to cover the topic of testing. There are basically three types of tests, two types of collections. So the first category is a swab. Usually, it's a nasal swab or an oral swab. There is also a saliva test that now has FDA emergency use approval. And the gold standard diagnostic test is something called a PCR. And that is the test that's being done. It's a molecular test, and that's the test that tests for that identifies the RNA of the COVID-19 virus, which is which is called SARS-CoV-2. And that test is the one that they're doing at all these at the doctors' offices, at the hospitals, and also at the testing, the public testing sites in the county. The second test is newer. There are two types that have been approved or two companies that have approved antigen tests now in many, many companies, including local labs that have the PCR test approved. But the antigen test, I want to point out, because I don't want people to get confused about what the test results tell you. It's a rapid test. It can be done in 15 minutes to an hour. And it's kind of similar, it's similar to the flu rapid test or a strep rapid test that you might have gotten in your doctor's office in the past. And this antigen test is only useful if you are have a high positive predictive value. So if you're symptomatic, for example, or that you know you were exposed to somebody with confirmed COVID, and you go in and you get tested and you get a a positive result, it's highly likely that you have COVID-19. But if you get a negative result, it is not, it does not give you much information about whether it does not confirm that you do not have COVID-19. And so it's really, really important for that test, that negative test, the rapid test, if it's negative and it says you don't have COVID-19, that you don't interpret that result as that as confirmatory. And then you have to send a an actual PCR test to confirm it. I make this distinction because the risk that we're we're seeing right now is that doctors who are not counseling patients correctly, if they come in and they're sick and then they get an antigen test and it's negative, they think they don't have COVID, and they go out, they might infect their family members, they might go to work, they might behave as if they don't have COVID, when in fact, they do. So that's a point I wanted to make. And then the the test with the red X on it is the serology or antibody test. And the reason why I do that is because some people try to use or try to sell a blood test for as a diagnostic test. And so there's nothing wrong with this test, except that it's not very predictive in a population such as ours for COVID-19. And when you get the result, it's really hard to interpret. It does not prove immunity, and it does not disprove immunity. It could show that you had have antibody to the common cold. Or if you do have antibody to COVID-19, it might not even tell you that you do. So this is really used only now for studies and in specific populations like healthcare providers. The therapies, we've made significant progress in the therapies. And I think the message I want to provide and some of the messages I've heard from our national doctors, national leaders who are doctors, is really about hope. And in the very short time, science has provided us with some therapies that appear they're investigational therapies, but they appear to be helpful, in particular for people who are more severely ill, hospitalized patients who need oxygen or who are on ventilation and a ventilator or who are on ECMO, extracorporeal membrane oxygenation, so another level of of oxygenation. There are two medications that are helpful as therapies. Remdesivir has been shown to shorten time to clinical recovery. And dexamethasone, which is a steroid, has shown to reduce mortality. And those are both great improvements in outcomes of what could otherwise be very severe illness with COVID-19. There, we now have evidence to show that hydroxychloroquine is not only of no benefit, but can cause harm because of risk of cardiac dysrhythmias. So that scientific advice right now is to not use hydroxychloroquine. And any other speculative therapies that you hear in social media or anywhere else right now, there is no other proven treatment that helps for COVID-19. So certainly, do not, they are, you would, you should not pursue any other kinds of therapies. And finally, for our vaccines, as you've heard in the news, there are many, many different trials, hundreds of trials going around, all around the world, and promising progress even in recently in this week on vaccines that target the spike protein or target the RNA virus vaccines. So we are already preparing both for the flu season and to deliver vaccine for the flu, which we are highly, highly recommended. Another takeaway message is that please, everyone, get your flu vaccine this fall because for many reasons, most important to your to each individual is that you can have co-infection with flu and COVID, which we presume would cause even worse disease. But also for public health, we or for doctors, if we see someone sick with flu symptoms, we don't know if it's COVID or flu. And there are other issues with, for example, our healthcare workers. If they get flu, then we are, well, we'll be even more stretched than as far as our ability to take care of people in the healthcare setting. So just a summary of where we are now as far as our community-wide, statewide efforts to control COVID-19. We have seen this significant surge. We are concerned about our healthcare, our healthcare supply and capacity to take care of everyone, either with COVID-19 or any other regular healthcare needs. It's the it's for the past two weeks, we've been, public health has been messaging and taking actions to do what the governor calls dimming the switch, which is dialing back a little bit on activities that lead to disease transmission. And so as of this Monday, we had some closures of indoor operations. The things that are have are now required to move outdoors include restaurants, fitness facilities, places of worship, and museums and galleries. There are still some indoor operations, but they have to be subject to these very strict protocols that were implemented early in this pandemic, including offices for essential services, retail, grocery stores, and hotels and lodging are still open. And we also just list there because there are questions about, can I still get dog grooming for my dog? Yes, that subject to protocols, that is still open. Some essential services like childcare and day camps are still open, of course, subject to protocols. I did want to cover the topic of face coverings because I get a lot of questions about that. There is a statewide order, and these bullet points are very specific. Basically, the the message is when you leave your house, put on your face covering. If you are alone at home, in your office, in your car, no chance of, not in a public space, then you don't have to wear a face covering. But everywhere else, it really is advised and required to for everyone to be wearing one. And even some of these questions, walking through common areas such as hallway stairs, elevators, and parking facilities, yes, you should be wearing a face covering. These are places where you might come into contact with people. So that's why we are advising people to be prepared and to have their face covering. But also that face coverings don't replace physical distancing and that you must that really you you should do both. And our six feet, it's we say six feet of physical distancing, that's a minimum. The more distance you can have between from other people, the better. And so we say, wear your mask, wash your hands, watch your distance, avoiding crowds and staying staying away from people that you don't live with. A lot of the outbreaks or the cases that we're seeing is really just from mixing between households. The other good thing about face coverings is early on, there was not a lot of research. And now the research is building. And just in the past two days, just this week, some publications in JAMA and more evidence, observational evidence that shows that face coverings, if people are universally masking in healthcare settings, it was shown to decrease new cases in some areas of outbreaks. It was shown to limit the amount of outbreaks in a hair salon. And so the evidence is building as we as we carefully observe and study this that universal masking, everyone wearing a face covering can contribute to lower disease transmission rates. And so we provide the instructions of how to wear them, to put it over your nose and mouth, because we see people wearing them on their foreheads and on their chins, or it's it can be uncomfortable. So we see people wearing them, you know, just on their mouth, but they having their nose out, and that doesn't prevent the respiratory droplets from being spread to others. So we we provide that messaging so people can remember that image. And also that here, the one I is about touching, touching your your face mask, which after you've worn it for a little while, can be soiled with with your own saliva or respiratory droplets and then transfer pathogens to your hands. And so really to be only touching it on the sides. And that's what I had as far as comments.
Thank you, Dr. Go. And I should mention, some of you are already aware of this, I can tell. But if you want to ask questions of me or anyone in the group, there's a Q and A icon. It should be sort of in the toward the bottom of your screen in the middle. And if you click on that and type and then hit the return bar, it'll send the question on, and we'll try to answer as many of those as we can. I had a question, though, Dr. Go, if I could, and that is looking at our COVID dashboard, which is a painful but very helpful data source. You know, it looks like we were at 101 fatalities. And over the diagnosed cases of 16 and 20, that's about six, it's actually over 6%, which seems high. And I wonder if you have an opinion on that. And of course, probably not to answer the question for you, but I think probably somewhere in this answer is the issue of long-term care and assisted living or skilled nursing facilities. So.
Yeah, and it's not just that because we have had community deaths of even, you know, 96-year-old who died, who was not in a long-term care facility. And so it's the age skewing, the the age demographic that we have. If we stratify by age, then our case fatality rate would be similar to what we see in the literature. It's just that we have a high population of older folks, and that's who this virus really targets as far as mortality.
I think the last time I asked this question at council, we were slightly fewer fatalities. But at that time, the average age of the decedents from COVID-19 was 84. Is that still in the ballpark?
Yeah, so the age of decedents is the it's the same, it's unchanged. And then our number of deaths has really declined. We have been at zero for most days, and there will be one or or one or so a week. And those generally, now we have to actually kind of evaluate each case to see whether it is a COVID-associated death, because there are people who had COVID and then two months later passed away from old age or something else. And that wouldn't not necessarily be COVID-associated. So but the the age that's really changed, that's really important to note, is that our age of cases, mean age of cases, was up at 69. And now we're down to 53, meaning the median, the median age. So really, the number of cases pushing that median all the way down to the age 53 is because the number of people younger than that age has increased so dramatically in the past couple of weeks.
And that should also, as I understand, lead to a lowering of the fatality and hospitalization rates because the sense is that younger people may be better able to withstand the virus, if you will.
Well, I think are still, you've seen that our deaths has stayed low. But what we have seen is that the 18 to 40-year-olds across the county are making up a much, much higher proportion of hospitalizations. So the the they're still affected at a lower rate. However, the sheer number of people is resulting in many, many more of our hospitalizations being due to younger folks, folks younger than 40.
We have a lot of questions coming in, and we won't be able to to address all of them. But one is, what are we doing to ensure that our statistics are as accurate as they possibly can be?
Well, I have an amazing resource. I've got a team of epidemiologists, including Dr. Feaster, who's a PhD in epidemiology from UCLA and did his public health degree at USC. And so we use the highest standards of statistics, and we work as a professional field. So we work together with the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists and the CDC and with the definitions that we use for our statistics. We try to make sure that they're consistent so that when you're trying to compare from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, you're comparing apples to apples. And where you're not, we try to explain and make sure you know what it is. And so on our dashboard, we've added a tab that says, what does this mean? And so you can actually see what each of the definitions are for each of our statistics.
And another question is, preliminary question would be, is it possible to get COVID twice? Do we know?
It's a good question, and the answer is we don't know. And we're actively trying to look for reinfections. We do know that we are seeing some evidence that immunity wanes in a matter of possibly months. And so, but we don't know if the antibodies not detectable. Does that mean you wouldn't have an immune response? Maybe you still would, it's just that we can't detect it on the blood test. So that is a research question that we are still looking to study. So that is a research question that we are still looking to study. Right so far, what we think we're seeing is a, a long-term shedding and waxing and waning sometimes of both symptoms and also of um detectable virus that may be live or dead virus and not so much reinfection.
And um, someone asked, is there sufficient uh personal protective gear for healthcare workers presently? I know we've seen that kind of go up a little bit too.
Um, unfortunately, so for, for, in, in the beginning, it was so um such a, a problem. We really didn't have enough and because we had the surge of cases, it was really a problem and uh we increased our supply chain as a state. Um, unfortunately, at a federal level, this is problem has not been solved. Um, and really needs a federal effort to do that. But now we are starting to get worried again about PPE for healthcare workers and we um are monitoring that. And it's on the state monitoring dashboard by jurisdiction, we check in with our hospital, we check in with, with our skilled nursing facilities. And so far we are doing okay, but we're concerned about what the future might bring uh because we don't think there is ample PPE to be wasted or in the case that we get a lot more cases, so.
This will be a bit of a softball and I want to preface it by saying some of us have, have noted with chagrin that the parade was uh canceled for New Year's Day, the Rose Parade. Uh, and, but uh, several questions along the lines of, you know, what can we do to help? And I think even I know the answer to that, but I want to give that to you. Um, I, I think the question is not just with the parade, but generally, what can we do to help beat this pandemic?
Um, so we want you to take care of yourself. And every person that takes care of themselves by following the public health guidance means that we're, we're collectively going to be better off in our community. So that means the things that I'm saying, which is, you know, number one is staying informed with facts. Um, really following along and, and believing and sharing messages that are the truth that are science-based. So as long as we're founded in that, then we're following science-based recommendations, which are, is really the limiting your movement and not interacting between households. And when you have to work, if you're in a, an essential worker, that you are, that the measures that are being taken in your workplace are maximized to reduce the risk to the lowest risk possible. And what we're seeing is people maybe socializing and then bringing in COVID to their workplaces. And so we have, we need just as much vigilance outside of the workplace as inside the workplace. Um, I think there are, um, I think support for the truth on a national level and making sure that um we have better um national leadership on the pandemic is also uh on the top of my list for what, what would make a difference for our nation.
Certainly echo that at the, in terms of the vacuum of, of national leadership, but um uh, one question is, um, will spikes in the number of cases necessarily mean spikes in the number of deaths?
So I, I think um, we, it, it doesn't necessarily because uh we do see a lower case fatality rate, a lower rate of death among younger people. But um there are enough people, even among younger people, who have um underlying health conditions that would predispose them to being at risk for death. So the number will still be high, even if the percentage is not high, the number of deaths will still increase.
Yeah, this is an editorial comment by me, but I, I see some parallels in the pandemic to climate change, that we have science that is telling us something pretty clearly and that scientists believe in. And yet there are some in our uh nation that just want to reject that, you know, it's sort of no masks and I'm going to go out no matter what and let's all just do whatever we want. And it's hard to, hard to fathom, you know, with this disease that's killed over a hundred thousand people now in the US, probably substantially more at this point. But um, someone purchased a, a saliva test, it sounds almost like a, a home uh COVID-19 testing kit. Uh, it's FDA-approved. And apparently VA-approved. Is it, uh, do those work in your opinion? Are they reliable?
So that is an option. I, I, I think that an MP swab, the, the kind that goes way back and is not fun to get is probably still more sensitive. But that LabCorp is the one lab that is um offering this home saliva test right now that's FDA-approved. And uh, that is certainly a viable option for people who want to get tested but want to do it in that fashion.
And then I'm just unfamiliar with the, that product, is it, uh, does one then read the results themselves, like other sort of home tests? Or do you send the results somewhere to be read?
Um, I have to look at the website again, but I believe it needs to be ordered by a physician and, and uh, you know, have a physician help you interpret what the result is, yeah. That would be the best.
Here's a great question that is um so basic that probably many of us overlook it. What is the most effective disinfectant uh in your view?
Um, so plain old bleach works great, chlorine bleach. However, um, there are some considerations um about what disinfectant you might choose. And there's a, a list, it's called EPA List N, the letter N as a nurse. And um, you Google that and there's a, a giant list of EPA-approved disinfectants for COVID-19. And um, any of those are fine, there are certain products that are better for people with asthma, for example, or are sensitive to uh, as far as their breathing. And so um, there's information about that, I haven't, I don't have that up uh yet right now, but the state has um some information about if you have asthma, what kind of cleaning products would be better and what to avoid. So you can look through the List N and look for the products that are more asthma-friendly.
Excellent. But you know, under no circumstances should anyone be injecting a disinfectant.
Um, yes, that is correct. Um, and don't drink bleach, um, it's not good for you.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, this has been great, Dr. Go, and uh thank you so much. I'm, I continue to be really grateful that uh, for your efforts and that you're part of our team in Pasadena and that we have a public health department, you know, there are times in any organization where we look at utility and, you know, and over the years, some, some people have wondered why we have a, a public health department. I've always uh counted myself as a supporter and uh hope you see it the same way.
I do.
And I'm really grateful for your effort and your team and I, I, I just can't imagine uh when this is all behind us, you know, the the true vaccine comes out and we've eradicated the virus. Uh, I, I hope the city manager gives you, you know, a six-month vacation or something because you, you and your.
I would appreciate that very much.
I know that much, so.
Um, well, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Go, thank you for being here. And um, I thought now we would turn to Chief Perez and uh cover some of the issues around policing and one, of course, segue would be just the virus has created some policing issues in terms of um you know, the way our officers uh go out and uh, you know, make sure that they're protecting the community, all of us, but also themselves and their families. I know I've had conversations with the chief about um making sure that the, our officers have enough PPE and of course that would extend to the fire department as well. Um, but also I think, you know, we're at a, a, a unique time in our, in our history and in terms of the George Floyd uh murder. I'm going to just call it what it was and I think um the increased scrutiny, rightly so, of, you know, the way that we police ourselves, because we really do, the police power is something that we all agree that is necessary and proper in a society and that we vest our, our police departments in uh with the authority to be able to, again, protect us and themselves. Um, so there's been, you know, there's just this whole focus on how people of color uh are treated by the police and no doubt we have vestiges of, of racism in our society sadly to this day, but but chief, let me throw it to you and, and whatever remarks you have and if any of my comments or thoughts there are helpful for jumping off points, by all means, um, let's, let's get into that.
Absolutely, and, and I'll touch on COVID briefly and um get into the, the killing of Mr. Floyd. And we'd have never have predicted a world pandemic and a global social movement all at one time. So this is absolutely a, a moment in world history uh that is challenging for us and probably one of the worst times we've ever seen. And so for us, when it comes to COVID, we've been fortunate. Having Dr. Go has been fantastic to have her as a go-to person. Uh, the fire department has been a perfect uh placement for us to really work with them and build an expertise between us on many of these issues. And we began back in mid-March, working with the fire department and Dr. Go to create protocols for us that worked out in the field. To begin with, we saw crime drop initially, calls for service dropped, but by April, we saw a spike in the highest crime that we've seen the last two months, probably in close to two decades, have increased with both violent crime with more than two dozen shootings that we've had. And so we've seen some of our street crime increase as well. Uh, the service area where we're at has seen a decline in crime. Uh, we do have some challenges with some thefts, but away from that, COVID-wise, we've had potentially one hundred personnel uh that we thought might have been exposed. We have uh quarantined probably close to three dozen. And uh we've had, I believe, two positive uh infections for COVID during that period of time. So we've been fortunate, the hundred people possibly exposed, nearly three dozen people uh quarantined demonstrate the strength of the process that we have to be safe. If in fact we started to cut corners or start to tell ourselves, hey, you're okay, we turn back to work. We don't know what kind of damage that could do and the spread that could happen. There have been two occasions in which we've almost closed down our dispatch center. Now, we don't have a mobile command post yet, but in fact, our dispatch center being closed down can create uh enormous amount of problems. We average three hundred and fifty calls per day and twelve to fifteen hundred calls into the emergency dispatch center. So these are challenges that we planned for, we're fortunate, our protocols have changed constantly. The officers have videos that we received, we've developed ourselves, we have enough PPE right now. And we do go through our police units, our equipment, the station, that we do, we have a protocols uh for disinfecting many of our areas. So we've done well with this, there's always a concern about what the future is going to bring. So for now, we're absolutely grateful to the work by Dr. Go. And again, Chief Frieders and Battalion Chief Tim Sale have been outstanding in these efforts. So uh, we are going through this every day, we are still doing the temperature checks. I have one right here by my desk, if you could see it. We still go through these daily protocols, we have not let that go. And masking inside the organization is paramount for us, so we do see that happening uh both in the field and within the police station. As we move into um the, the social movement and where we're at, uh, the, the killing of Mr. Floyd and what's happened in Minneapolis has been disastrous all across this country. And the amount of violence that we've seen increased as a result of it. Some cities are seeing a hundred shootings in a weekend in their cities. And we've seen the outcome of social movement with civil unrest. Now Pasadena has had um more uh events here in this town than most cities. Uh, we have had uh both vigils and marches and protests. And we've had some of the largest in the county outside of LA, right here in front of City Hall. And our approach has been very specific, very supportive. Uh, we communicate and collaborate with all the organizers to ensure it's safe. You haven't seen skirmish lines, you haven't seen projectiles flying through the air. Uh, we are prepared for the worst-case scenario. We have made five, six arrests, one for a gun at one of these uh protests. We have arrested individuals uh who were breaking windows of a couple of businesses that we arrested them quickly. So five or six arrests for probably the close to thirty thousand people that visited Pasadena, we have done well. The officers have been fantastic in their approach, our dispatch center and taking the amount of calls. And it's been a challenge for us, but they have been patient, they have been focused. And we're very, very uh fortunate to have many of the officers. Two and a half years ago, we had nearly um three dozen vacancies in the police department. Today we look at four or five vacancies. So the young officers understand this movement, we have a lot to do. Years and years of trying to bring down crime in our society, uh, council member. We have tried to bring down the violent crime from the nineteen eighties to where we're at today. We've probably seen a drop in seventy percent in violent crime. And I've been here during that period of time. And so we're fortunate to see the drop, but with that has come some trauma in our communities and how we've had to deploy and do gang enforcement and many of the other issues. This year alone, we have more than two dozen assaults on officers and we've seized a hundred and seventy guns from the street. So the challenge for us is not to ignore, ignore the social movement. There, this is an opportunity bring in, to play a lot of the policing strategies that, that I would appreciate. But at the other side of it, I have to make sure we have a strategy for the people who sit in neighborhoods and have to listen to gunfire and still have the gun violence and the high rate of crime. So we have to figure this out, so it's not one way or the other, it's the balance of both. And we have to understand this for the police department. I could, I could end it on this point to answer some questions. But we in fact have seen in nineteen nineties, after the, the civil unrest, we saw the greatest change in policing. Uh, the greatest amount of federal granting, increase in police officers, community initiatives. Uh, the incarceration rates were high as part of where we're at today with these problems. Uh, but in fact, uh, those problems back then, they changed police departments from the professional model of um crime control and crime prevention into a model of social control and social prevention. So everything that was failing in government, everything failing in our communities, we were tasked with. If you look at what we're doing today, we have tobacco enforcement. They're asking me to take care of a problem in a park, that's only twenty-five percent of police problems. Seventy-five percent is a youth issue and a socioeconomic issue, it's not a policing problem. We have forty thousand crimes associated with homeless. Uh, there's a portion of those that shouldn't come to us ever. And we, we do receive those and at times when we do transfer them to three-one-one, they come back to us. We don't have uh social workers that want to work with any nonprofits if it's not the police. So there are challenges for us to find a balance, but we will continue, we are fortunate on this point that over the last couple of years, our reform started before the movement. We've dropped the use of force by fifty percent, we began immersive training, we didn't wait for AB three ninety-two in any way. We went after this early. And so what's happened before, I can't control that, what I can only control is the time I walk in as a chief and the decisions I make to avoid these problems of the past. Release of body worn cameras, the critical incident videos, the drop of use of force by fifty percent, the drop in complaints. These are good things, but they're not an end state. So as we move forward, we're looking forward to work with the community and trying to look for opportunities uh to work with nonprofits as we always have. And I will ask this, there's some questions that were asked about how to help. There are a lot of people out there that need assistance. During this COVID, the police department has helped raise thirty thousand dollars. We donated close to a ton of food to outlets. We've donated computers, this morning we delivered twelve computers to Pac-Tel that needed them for the kids that can't even log on to do Zoom at home. So these issues that we're having with COVID are impacting the ability for our youth to be better. And if people want to help, you've got to open up those uh, that, that wallet and give to these organizations that need help. We have here out of our pockets and with organizations, but it takes more than that. We cannot ignore the social challenges and the economic challenges that are hurting our communities.
Well, and you've covered a lot of ground there, chief, I mean, one thing that may seem mundane to a lot of folks, I do think it was related to COVID. And in our district, it was um, you know, very noticeable and that is illegal fireworks. I mean, there was a period there around the Fourth of July. Uh, I don't know if it was because people had so much pent-up sort of uh energy uh and they were looking for a way to express themselves. I don't know, the supply chains for illegal fireworks must have been remarkably efficient in this time of the pandemic. Because certainly in West Pasadena, if you went out and sat on your front porch on the evening of July fourth, for example, it was like uh being on D-Day beach, uh, you know, back in World War Two, just non-stop.
And that was across the country and, and, but we care about our community here.
Yes.
And that was a problem for us. Our call volume had been the worst I've ever seen. At one point, we had over a hundred calls pending and the officers couldn't get to these uh quick enough. The problem with fireworks is as fast as we could get there, when you see paper on the street, you can't identify who and where. So we needed residents to point out people. And I know a lot of people in this environment absolutely did not want to point out people and who were doing uh the fireworks and I get that. So we were, our hands were tied a little bit, but we continued to respond and do the best we could.
I know some of those calls come in as shots fired. Um, probably for a host of reasons, but in certainly in some cases, people perceive that those bangs are potentially gunshot. So that's uh difficult as well. I know we had at least one case where there was a, a garage fire that started by illegal fireworks and the uh, the individuals were uh located and I think are being charged uh appropriately um for that violation. But um, as you know, chief, I sit on the Public Safety Committee and we are in, engaged in introspection um right now, as you know, of our use of. Of our use of force and our policing and what's deemed sort of civilian oversight, the rubric of. Civilian oversight. Of course, my belief has always been we have civilian oversight in the form of an elected city council that's directly accountable. To the community and then more specifically the Public Safety Committee. But just for everyone's benefit, we're in the midst of. Pretty intense hearings at the Public Safety Committee right now. Hearing statements and testimony and reports about this issue and. The mayor has actually planted a flag and said that he'd like to see. Us do whatever it is we're going to do, which I suppose could also include nothing. By August tenth. So we'll see about that. And I know you're reluctant to get out in front of the, the city manager, the city council. And I think the point that you made also was, was very valid, which is you're a new chief still. And you're homegrown. I remember doing a ride along with you in nineteen ninety-six. We were both younger and, and probably a little slimmer and a little quicker, but. And I think that's a huge asset to have a chief that. Grew up, as it were, in our police department, knows the Pasadena way, knows. The community policing criminal issues, preventive issues, the city council, the governance, the community. But what's your take to the extent you're comfortable on the sort of clamor? You know, I've been wanting to say, we don't want reform just for reform's sake. How do you see it?
Well, you know, as you know, and, and most people probably don't hear the public safety meetings every month or attend, but my approach has been to release what I can. We're well ahead of the law by a year in releasing body worn cameras and trying to be transparent. So at this point, we do have. I wouldn't call them oversight, but reporting bodies in the chief's advisory as well as the Public Safety Committee. And both have helped us. The chief's advisory got to the AB three ninety-two issue back in January. Some other groups are taking responsibility, saying we relate to the party, but the chief's advisory was really on us. About looking at the policies to do even more than the state was required. So I would look at the fact that, that a police commission. Citizen based is absolutely fine. We support that. In fact, our police association also supports that. There are eighteen thousand police departments in this country. There are seven, eight hundred thousand police officers. We do have bad apples that need to be terminated in every department at times. So we have to have some type. Of insurance that we're doing the right thing with the community and the public. My concern is only the fact that. We are one of the only agencies in the entire country that have oversight with a public safety committee of council members. And one of the only agencies you'll find with a chief's advisory anywhere. So my concern that most agencies don't have anything. How can Pasadena end up with a public safety, a chief's advisory, a possible, you know, auditor for the city and a police commission? When you have too many conflicting responsibilities and reporting parties, it could be confusing. Not only that, you could lose dozens and dozens of police officers that will find employment that makes their life a little bit easier. And not brings up the chances of being fired for, for false allegations. So we do have to be careful. Support the police commission. It's a great route to go. There's a long ways, I think, between now and the end of the year to see where we'll be. But I believe that our chief's advisory, when I created them in twenty eighteen, it was created with a group of people that represented. Organizations that were not very friendly to the police department. I did not want friends from the community on our. Chief's advisory. We chose people that represented multiple organizations and thousands of people. So they give me the bad news. And be very critical of the work we were doing. And that has been helpful for us to be a better police department. Now we're looking at the evolution. Is going to be to, to really defunct the chief's advisory and eliminate them and just move to a police commission. And not have the police department report to the Public Safety Committee any longer, which suit us best. But we're in support. If that's a direction. We are here to support that effort.
And yeah, we'll see. I mean, I think it may be the case that this is one of those where among the eight council members, there may be nine opinions at the end of the day. I know one of my colleagues from the Public Safety Committee is already talking about. A citizens ballot initiative that is not feasible for this election cycle. So we'd be looking at twenty twenty-two. We've done a survey to encourage people in Pasadena to share their viewpoints with us, but. I think, you know, to be continued, at least at this point in time, we'll have a couple of more public safety committee meetings probably before. The city council.
There's a lot of places. I mean, for example, this year so far, we've had close to sixty, sixty-five thousand calls for service. And we've used force eleven times. And if you look at that kind of numbers, yet we were able to. Seize a hundred and seventy weapons off the street and forty assault rifles at that. And so with, with only eleven uses of force, it may be low, but each one of those have to be as perfect as they can. And it doesn't matter. We have, you know, by this year's end, we may have the lowest use of force ever since I've been here on, on, on record. It just continues. And, and, and with this many guns being seized, it'll be one of the highest years of engagement on that end. So we have to look at the fact, how do we balance the violence end? The better training that we have through the police commission. And we even look at the, the hundred and twenty or thirty thousand calls per year that we get. Most of those, you really won't be able to recycle through nonprofits. There's probably a small percentage of calls for service. That could go out to these community organizations, but we are concerned that it'd end up coming back to us. So a lot of people do have to be educated. And maybe it's the cheat, the, the citizen, the police commission that will help us do that education. Because again, if people are under the assumption that most police calls can be diverted. We could find out the very tragic and difficult way that that's not possible. However, it's not just. My opinion, we have to go through the evolution of science and experiment. And hope nothing bad happens during that process. So we are very open to looking at the police commission. And the opportunity to find out where we could actually move some of these calls to nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, I think. For, for many folks, you know, I, this, there's a sense of a, of a, a known sort of universe of police calls. And the ability to then select those that are, for example, nonviolent or may involve primarily issues. And that not related to policing or, or criminal justice. My problem is, you know, in real time, we don't know, you know, I, I mentioned recently that. You know, it's not as though at the beginning of each one of your shifts, the watch commander hands out a. You know, a sheet with the violent calls and the nonviolent calls. I mean, your officers don't always know. How a call is going to unfold. Now I'm all for. Working smarter, working better, using more specialized resources, addressing the root causes of some of the issues that you're. Sadly required to, to intervene, you know, at the, at the eleventh hour ultimately on. But the idea of defunding the police or just assuming that there are classes of, of calls for service that. A, a social worker, for example, would be just as effective as a police, uh, police response, you know, concerns me a great deal.
Yeah, we're able to move, you know, five thousand of our hundred and twenty thousand calls to nonprofits. That would be a high number. And what, and you said it perfectly. What, how the call comes out is not how the call ends. So many people like LAPD was just looked at for their nine one one system. We have seventy thousand nine one one calls per year. The end of most of those calls, we use de-escalation. It's not what we thought and the incident was safely resolved. So people look at the outcome there, but they don't look at the beginning of the call. When it comes out, a person will potentially a weapon or a fight breaking out. That's not, those are not calls. We can be able to find nonprofits to respond to. So it does take the police to first respond. Make sure that's not the case and then we can see what we have. But there are calls that should never come to us. There are calls, our, our hope team would tell you that they have calls every day that are not part of the calls that we. Document on the computer because they come through a different route. But these are calls in which people want the hope team to go out. And work on these issues with people that might be sleeping on the sidewalk. And they want the officers to go out and do that. And the officers will in fact go do that, but we think to ourselves, that's not our job. We wish that call could go to. A nonprofit or a service organization to do that. Many of the homeless don't use the vouchers. We did a study. And many vouchers were left in their pockets because they don't want to go to Union Station and sleep in the bunk style shelter. They want a place where they want a hotel room, a motel room or a trailer, and that's fine. But most of the time what requires. Assistance for that is understanding, do they have any drug substance abuse? Are there other issues that we have to manage through this? Do they have a caseworker to help them if they are going to be in a hotel? We saw a few months back when this started with the homeless placing them into motels. It required a call or response from the police department to go deal with some of the conflict that was occurring. So there are, there is a lot of work to get where we want to be as a community, but to get back to a preventative state. I hope doesn't take as long as it took for us to get here. Since the nineties to where we sit today, we've created this problem that we think. Everything is a police problem. It absolutely is not. You know, there are a lot of fallacies. Now I'll use the eight can't wait that. Somebody just wrote on, on, on the comments that the eight can't wait should be an area we really train for officers to, to do their police work. If you saw our latest critical incident video we released with the officer involved shooting, it will bring goosebumps to you. To have a person shooting from inside the car, requiring us to shoot at both the moving vehicle and in fact, the vehicle itself. In the eight can't wait, that video will demonstrate that three or four of those principles were violated. And for us to have trained to that, we would have had two outcomes. One dead police officers at the scene. Which none of us want to see. And secondarily, we would have saw many officers or witnessed officers placed on administrative leave. Pending criminal charges. But when you watch the video, that's not what you get from the video at all. So the eight can't wait, campaign zero. All great starts for conversation, as is the fact that how many calls can we shift from the police department to nonprofits? Are all great start points, but none of them are. One require more collaboration, more discussion and to know a lot more about policing, social issues that we have because right now. I drove over to a park that was having some problems is I looked at the group that was out there. A couple were homeless. A lot of youth were out there. The police officers drove by, they had a conversations. My point is no other nonprofit, no other organization was out there trying to conduct outreach. Now we'll do our best, but that is not our job all the time. So we have a lot of work as a society to place policing. Where we want, but we also have to come to some very harsh realities on both sides. On, on the policing side to know there's room for growth and on the opposite side to know that the first beliefs. Empirically based on science, based on our officer involved shooting and based on our calls for service are likely not the end state. To start changing police work so quick. We got to be very, very careful for this. There's one city up north. That is going to move to police officers not doing traffic stops and I'm absolutely fine with that if that's what they want to do. The problem with policing in my years, thirty-five years of being here, the biggest cases I've tripped over by accident. Where I have a gun in the car or somebody had a gun or I'm wrestling with somebody has been because of a minor violation. When all you were doing was citing for the stop sign violation. So I worry, we're going to put young people and non-police officers. In the most horrific scenes, the videos and videos over the years on training come from traffic stops. And just a traffic stop, you didn't know was going to turn bad. I've lost my own friends to these over the thirty years. So it's horrible. So. We have a lot to do in terms of, of science, empirical research and, and collaborative approaches together to really understand this.
And I want to commend you on releasing a video, even when it's painful and, and. Difficult to watch, like the recent officer involved shooting with, I believe, Mr. Nelson was the. The subject involved in that. And it's, you know, if one can handle watching that kind of thing, it is. Extremely eye opening in terms of all the points that you're making.
And what is even more difficult for me with the last couple of shootings where we've had the person in the middle of the street with the automatic weapon with the vest on. In these incidents, I've worked with the families to have them view the video and work with them and, and try to understand what was happening. And it is an emotional experience with the Nelson family and allowing them to watch the video before the public. It's the right thing to do, but I don't think you'll find a police department very, it's rare across this country. That we allow the family to watch it, but yet it's the right thing for us to ensure the family could watch it before the general public. And you know, their only comments are they apologize to the officers for this happening and they wanted to talk to the officer at some point. About what happened. I want to connect both sides. You could imagine that type of connection. Is, is just terrible and it's very emotional for myself to be in the room with the family and just have this discussion. We have a long way to go. We have our share. Of trauma that we've caused in policing over the years, to try to bring down violence, but we also know that we do a lot of great work in our community. And, and most people probably wouldn't see that because we don't advertise it like that every day. So on both ends, there's work to be done. And you know, one of the, the biggest reasons we're going to a police commission likely at some point. Well, well, is people's mistrust of the police department. When you look at McGade, whether you look at Leroy Barnes or what happened with Mr. Thomas. People say, wait a second, that shouldn't have happened. Those were all mistakes. Well, many people don't know all the facts and whether it was mistakes. Tragic mistakes at that or not, we're looking at a lot more facts than people are aware of and how we handle misconduct in our department is very strict. We do terminate, we do suspend, much like any other profession from the medical profession, the school profession, you know, attorneys at that. There's a process, there's rights, there's, there's many laws involved that just don't make it as simple. And these are not at will positions because of the mistakes over the years that have caused police officer rights to occur. So there's a balance here. We have twenty-three bills at the state level that are being looked at. Many, in my view, and I could say this. Is that the chief in Pasadena serves at a state board to make sure we have a local voice, both at the state board and a national board I sit on. To review many of these new laws that are coming forward and some are worthy. Decertification of police officers is discipline on police officers. Ensuring we, we terminate when we need to. Those are all good things that I'll push for at the state level. But many of them are poorly written. Many of them are, are, need a lot of work and we're trying to negotiate with many of these legislators. I think many people got fooled on three ninety-two. What a lot of people wanted, maybe three ninety-two wasn't the end state. Yet nobody held the legislators and say, why didn't you do what you told us you were going to do? So now what we're trying to do is push what wasn't done on individual police departments and that doesn't work that well. All you do is drive police officers to go work in different places where they think the community will, will support them. Police officers, to hire one police officer, it requires anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty candidates. So if this city were to lose, you know, another two, three dozen, you could do the math on what it requires for retraining, recruitment. And trying to bring them in. And I worry about the crime rate and some of the issues we have when it comes to violence. Once again. This year, twenty-five shootings with an increase with a dozen in June alone. It leads me to, to be very concerned about where we're at. Right now it's dipping back the other way. But we need everybody's help to ensure we have a safe community all over from one end, from the north to the south and the east to the west. It's a safe city for everybody.
And I did get a question about how the public will know and be able to participate in the discussion at public safety. And I think the short answer is, and ultimately the city council, when it comes to the full council is, you know, use the city's website. If you go on cityofpasadena.net, you'll find a, a section on sort of government. And you can toggle down to the city council agendas and the committee, city council committee agendas. As those come up as well as, you know, the local media have tended to been following the, the public safety committee meetings and the like.
We'll ensure council member that we get that out to our social media as well. So people register with us to get our news. We'll make sure they get it. From the police department.
And I should mention, if I could, just a, a quick plug. If you want to be part of our District Six emails. And notifications and the like, we have a website, District Six website on the city's website. But just send me an email at smadison@cityofpasadena.net. S M A D I S O N at cityofpasadena.net and we'll add you to the list and make sure that you get that information. So. Chief, thank you very much. Thank you for the training that we participated in.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we really enjoyed that. The Public Safety Committee, or is it the entire council?
Entire council.
Yeah, has been out visiting some of the simulated training that our officers go through. And here again, very eye opening in terms of the challenges and stresses.
I appreciate that because the immersive training is a big part of, of dropping our use of force. We use complaints for officers to watch their body worn camera. We do live scenarios, but we're also going to upgrade that equipment. Not only to do better training, but to bring implicit bias training on the video. So the officers could engage that. Most of society never even touches implicit bias. If any of you have been through it in your organizations, most organizations across this country never do it for whatever reason. If any of you have been through it in your organizations, most organizations across this country never do it for whatever reasons. We do go through it to understand the, the human biases we have. So we appreciate you going through it. The emotion, the emotions of making uh, decisions in a fraction of a second to shoot or don't shoot. It really resonates, doesn't the council member?
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
No. So, and you know, being a city council member, I'm not used to making decisions quickly. So, well, um, without further ado, I want to turn to the city manager and Steve, I'm not sure. You know, if I were your lawyer, I would say maybe you shouldn't say anything at all because. You've got two great department heads that just made you look really good and uh, you know, uh, it's going to be a tough act to follow.
Well, I'll be brief and I will point out that I appointed both of them, so I will take some. Just a, a few things I want to touch on because when we're not talking about COVID nineteen or social unrest, there actually are still other things that go on in the city. We still need to operate, but first and foremost though, when people talk about folks working twenty four seven. Literally that's what Dr. Go has been doing since March and I want to, I want to call that out. She looks so put together. But um, she's really put in more hours than, than any human ought to. And we're not going to give her a vacation. We're going to give her a sabbatical when she gets through this. And, and Chief Perez, same thing for I think virtually every demonstration we've had in the city and we've probably had three dozen. He's been on site uh, for a number of weeks. I would just leave my office. And I'd walk over to the police department and I'd hunker down with them and we'd sit and we'd wait. To see if anything bad transpired and thankfully through the good work of the police department and frankly, the cooperation. Of those wanting to be heard and demonstrating peacefully, things went well. But you always have to prepare for the event that they may not. So he was always on scene, uh, and so both of these two people have probably put in, well, certainly hundreds and hundreds of hours. Uh, over and above what they normally do in the last few months. So just wanted to not let that go. But in terms of just some other things going on in the city, uh, you know, people talked about shutting down. The city never really shut down. Everyone's trash still got picked up. Uh, we still continue to maintain the parks. Uh, sixty percent of our workforce continued to show up each and every day as normal. The water and power departments operating, the lights come on, the water runs. And we've been able to keep city operations going, even though we've had to have a number of employees telecommuting. Now granted, the libraries are closed, but we've shifted to drive up service and our recreation centers are closed. But we still have everybody using uh, working. We detailed out a number of librarians. For the health department to assist with contract tracing. So, but your city is still working for you. And as you mentioned, Steve, that we adopted our budget, it was a balanced budget. Uh, and it did not draw on our reserves. And this was even during uh, the downturn that took place related to COVID nineteen. Between last fiscal year that ended June thirtieth and the new fiscal year that we're in now. We estimate that we're going to lose about thirty million dollars in our general fund. Which is about two hundred and sixty five million dollars. So it's, it's more than a ten percent loss. It's significant. But thankfully, and we didn't know it at the time, but when the voters approved measure I. That really created a firewall for us on this revenue loss. We were in the current year going to reinvest those dollars into a number of capital projects. Sadly, we're going to have to delay those, but we're able to then reprogram that money. So we don't have to talk about reducing our fire department, reducing our police department, cutting back in the health department. At what turned out to be absolutely the most difficult period for us all. So that's good news for us. We continue to track the fiscal impact associated with the downturn in the economy. And actually our latest projections are, are looking a little bit better. Not hugely. I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars against hundreds of millions of dollars of a budget. But things aren't getting worse and it appears that sales tax revenue. All, all things considered is a down a little more than ten percent, which again is, is bad. But Pasadena's largest revenue source is property tax. Property tax has been very strong for us. It's very stable. So that's good news. Just a couple of other things I want to touch on. It's the best part about batting cleanup. I can be brief because everyone's ready to get onto questions. Uh, we all know again, as the council member indicated, there's no parade this year. But we don't know if there's going to be a game or not. Uh, that will become clear probably in the next few weeks, if not the next couple of months. Uh, the Rose Bowl is uh, expecting to be more quiet this year, which is probably good for some that live around the area. But it creates its own financial stresses for us. And the city council has taken action to backstop the debt service payment for the Rose Bowl. Because in the end, the city stands behind that. Uh, the Rose Bowl is like having an adult child and if they get into trouble, they, they come and they ask mom and dad for some support. And that's why we're there. Um, just two other things I want to mention. Lot of focus on the future of what would have been the seven, ten freeway. Uh, in broad brush and at some point relatively soon, we'll do a presentation to the city council. So everyone can hear all this. But the key now that the freeway is dead and that the tunnel is dead. Is to get the relinquishment of the property back to the city. In order to get the relinquishment of the property, in order to get Caltrans to give it back to us. We have to help Caltrans with their mission of figuring out what is the right connection between the freeway system and the local streets. Our transportation department and some uh, very able consultants who happen to be a district six constituents. Are helping us to develop that plan. And in coming uh, weeks, if, if not next couple of months, we're hoping to work through that. And get agreement with Caltrans that they agree that these intersections work. It may provide an opportunity for us to remove some on ramps and off ramps to the freeway. Uh, coming up with more elegant designs. There's an awful lot of on ramps and off ramps to a non-existent freeway. Uh, over around Walnut and Saint John and, and, and so you all know this. So we're trying to work through that. And once we solve for the interconnection, then Caltrans will say, okay, they don't need the property. They can relinquish it to us and then we can go about a robust community planning process to figure out what's the right land use for that property. And last I'll mention, they extended the time for the census. I promised the city clerk I'd put in a pitch. I, please go on to uh, my twenty twenty census.gov. If you haven't filled out your census yet, it's important that we be counted because this is how the federal government divvies up. Financial resources and sadly, there's been an effort to uh, make sure that states like California maybe don't get our fair share. So we have to make sure that we get the most full count as possible. So that's it for me. I'm standing by for any questions that I can be helpful with. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve, and uh, I want to echo your admonition about the uh, the census. I've already filled out our family and uh, I, I urge everyone to do the same. It's extremely important. You know, there's actually talk that California could lose a congressional seat, uh, which would be a first in history. You know, we've always gained seats when there's been a change, never lost any. Um, but we got a few questions, Steve, and this is of course a different organization, different governance and so forth. But we are, you know, partnering now more closely with the schools because of the um, ballot initiatives, I and J. What is uh, your understanding? And I know you speak regularly with Dr. McDonald and the school district. What's your understanding of when um, the public schools will have kids on campus again?
Well, they were planning for mid-August. Um, but the governor and Dr. Go can help us more on this is releasing some new guidance.
It'll be out tomorrow.
Right. Do you want to review that?
Yeah, so um, we've been working very, public health has been working very closely, closely with the schools at every level. The state and the governor with the California Department of Education. And they've been hammering through some metrics and so tomorrow there, there will be announcement with some guidance. On how to use, for example, the, the county monitoring watch list as far as COVID indicators. And when that might indicate for school districts throughout the state. Um, that it would be uh, advisable not to open or when it might be okay to consider opening it on campus in person. Classes. So there'll be, um, that will be coming out. But in the meantime, of course, we've been releasing um, a lot of guidance on how to most state, most lower the risk the most that you can. Uh, for when the time is right for being in person. A lot of the push right now for trying to get our community um, transmission down. In addition to trying to preserve our healthcare system is really trying to see at what time in the fall, maybe later fall. Maybe it won't be till, till after Thanksgiving. We don't know, but trying to get the right community transmission down because. We know that when we have school, kids and teachers on school again, there will be cases, there will be outbreaks. But we need to try and keep that to a minimum so that kids can still um, get person, in-person instruction.
And if I may, let me give a little example that happened this week with one of our day camps. Now it's far fewer children than an elementary school. And we cohort the kids into four different groups with, with different counselors. Uh, yet yesterday we had, is I'm talking about Victory Park Day Camp. We had to send everybody home and at least half the group has to quarantine. And the other half is waiting for test results because in a couple of the cohorts. Uh, children were exposed and counselor was exposed. So you think about a school with a few hundred children in it. And when a, a janitor, a teacher, an administrator or students come in. Uh, and if they're sick or have been exposed, then you'll find that you have to shut down a facility very quickly. So it's going to be a real challenge and, and I think it's sinking in that it's going to be a bit longer.
And I, I would assume independent schools, private schools fall under the same uh, guidelines from the governor?
Yeah, because the, the guidelines, the public health side of things is looking at. How, what is the burden of COVID in the whole community and what does that mean for bringing kids to campus and teachers to campus? And then the education side of things is weighing how they're going to manage actual cases or outbreaks given and. Really logistically function and, and, and teach kids uh, in this kind of a setting. So it's kind of the marriage of both considerations.
Yeah, it's unfortunate obviously because there was an article in the LA Times today about how. Online learning is uh, less successful with, you know, low income. Families and kids and often sadly, that tends to be kids of color. And um, you know, with the, even the resources like the chief was talking about, you know, do you have a computer? Do you have good nutrition at home? Do you have uh, you know, the support that a, a student needs? And often our schools provide that, uh, but not when our schools are, are closed because of the, of the virus. And I'm not, I'm not uh, pushing back and just, you know, making that observation. Um, Steve, I wanted to ask you a couple of other things. We had one question about the Humane Society. The council uh, renewed the Humane Society's uh, contract for a year, but is in some discussions and. I, I, I think, you know, I can pretty safely say district six, West Pasadena. You know, the Humane Society is a constituent. They reside in, in district six and. And um, a lot of us are big supporters of the Humane Society. So, you know, we're hopeful that uh. You know, we see this great organization continue to be, you know, part of our, our city uh, portfolio of services as well.
We, we've contracted with the Humane Society, I think for over a hundred years. And um, full disclosure, we recently found a stray kitten and they, Humane Society helped me out with the kitten. They've been great. But for, for a variety of reasons, they're having to change their fiscal structure, what they charge us and other contract cities. Uh, in some cases, the cost of services would be going up about fifty percent. And as a, as a municipal body charged with spending scarce taxpayer dollars. It's incumbent upon us, I think, to, to analyze that. And determine, is this the most cost effective expenditure? Are there other ways to achieve the, the services? Um, one discussion is with the county of Los Angeles. Uh, or forming our own JPA with other cities. Uh, my sense is after we go through all of that analysis and due diligence, which it's incumbent upon us to do. Probably the passing of Humane Society is, is still the best option for us for a whole lot of reasons.
Thank you for that. We got a few questions about masks and um, are we taking um. You know, a, a hard-nosed approach in terms of wearing masks um, in, in the community if people are, are flaunting that requirement?
Well, we're certainly trying to be diligent on our messaging. Uh, but the bottom line answer is no, the police department's not writing people citations. Uh, social pressure seems to work pretty well. And we do follow up in cases where we're getting reports that businesses are not adhering to the requirements, the rules, protocols. Um, but it's a, it's a balance and uh, it's about education and not being heavy handed. I responded to a concern around the Rose Bowl loop yesterday. I drove up there to just to do some observations myself. You know, just to see what was going on and, and so we'll probably be more focused on education and hopefully peer pressure. Uh, so we all need to let people know that they need to wear their face covering.
I think some of our officers are actually carrying extra masks and uh, when they encounter individuals, they, they provide the mask so there's no excuse, which is. Kind of a nice way to do it. Um, a couple of questions about the Colorado Street Bridge. And I know we have some developments coming uh, you know, relatively soon. So if you could address that, that'd be great.
Right, you know, we, um, the bridge historically sadly has been the scene of, of suicides. And interestingly, most of the people who commit suicide from the bridge aren't from Pasadena. Uh, very, very few. And it got to the point a couple of years ago where it was just. You know, we, we doubled or tripled the number that we had. And there's been some housing development in the area of the bridge. So it's more of a problem. Uh, and we were looking at some sort of physical barrier to make it more difficult. Cause the evidence has shown that most of types of suicides of that nature, they're an act of impulse. And if you can stop people from acting out in that instant, uh, they usually don't try it again. And you can get them the interventions they need. Because certainly I've heard a lot of people say, well, if they can't jump off the bridge, they'll just go to the freeway. But that's not what the evidence shows. So we've been studying various types of physical barriers. Obviously we all love the aesthetics of the bridge and we don't want to ruin the aesthetics of the bridge. So we've been very careful about this process. We hope to have some full scale mockups soon that we could place out there and the public could go by. Show socially distanced and then have face covering and uh, tell us what they think of, of the different treatments. So I expect that in the next couple of months, that will be coming back through the public safety committee and then ultimately to the city.
Great. Well, we have a number of other questions, but I want to be faithful to our schedule here. And thank uh, our, our panelists and everyone for, for tuning in at various times. We had, you know, we were hovering right around a hundred for the entire presentation. So that's a good turnout. And um, I also want to extend my thanks and gratitude to uh, K-Pass. And that would include George Filardo, Pasadena Media, Bobby Ferguson and Danny Hess. And also the uh, Information Technology Department of. Of the city, including Gary DeVore and Jade Chang who helped us uh, put this on. And um, I think we'll probably be looking at another Zoom uh, town hall uh, before the pandemic is over. We can always hope. But uh, it's good to know that we've got this resource and such great uh, public leaders as the three that uh, were with us tonight. So thank you so much. Everyone be safe, wear masks, socially distant, disinfect. And let's get through this uh, year as best we can. Thank you all and good night.
Thank you all. Good night.